Okay, welcome to the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting today at 1:30 on Tuesday, June 16th. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get started, this is National Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and with that, I'm going to read a short proclamation. Whereas the Montgomery County Department of Job and Family Services has a state-recognized multidisciplinary team known as the Collaboration Against Abuse Neglect and Exploitation, or CAINE, and whereas CAINE's mission is to develop collaborative partnerships to prevent and eliminate elder abuse, neglect and exploitation of older and vulnerable adults through comprehensive and effective education, advocacy, intervention, and service. And whereas during this unique time, we recognize that the COVID-19 pandemic has been both more harmful to older adults and left them more vulnerable to elder abuse with a nationwide increase in reports ranging from financial scams to incidents of family violence and neglect. And whereas the vulnerabilities of older adults and the dependencies they create can be proactively addressed with organized, systematic, and creative efforts, like those carried out by CAINE in Montgomery County. And whereas our community's older adult population is growing, not just in size but in diversity, and elder abuse ignores socioeconomic status, race, and gender. And whereas now more than ever is the time when citizens need to step up and to be a part of the critical effort to protect and end abuse of seniors in this nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, shows support and does hereby congratulate and thank the Collaboration Against Abuse Neglect and Exploitation, or CAINE, for all that they do for the citizens of Montgomery County and does hereby proclaim June 2020 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, signed by myself, Judy Dodge, Carolyn Rice, and Debbie Lieberman. Thank you. They do a wonderful job, by the way.
Mm-hmm, they do. Okay.
Okay, county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator. Ladies and gentlemen, we just have one resolution today until we get to the hearing at the end of the meeting. Resolution 20-723 is to authorize an agreement with Brumball Construction, Inc. for the Diamond Mill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in the city of Germantown at their lowest and best bid of $801,526 through November 12th of 2021.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Common Police Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 20-24. Submit a grant application to the Office of Criminal Justice Services for funds made available under the 2020 Coronavirus Supplemental Funding Program in the amount of $287,654.20 through February 28, 2021.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the county administrator, under the clerk's office, we have approval of the minutes of the meetings on June 9, 2020. Resolution 27-25, approval of bills. And Resolution 27-26, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services. There he is.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have quite a few resolutions to be reconsideration today. The first is 7.
The first of the resolutions today is 727. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 728 authorizes the assignment of the Agreement for Workers' Compensation, Self-Insurance, Third-Party Consultant, and Claims Administration Services from York Risk Services Group Incorporated to Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated. 729 extends the agreement with Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated for workers' compensation, self-insurance, third-party consultant, and claims administration services in the amount of $179,930 through June 30th of 2021. Next is 730. This authorizes the disbursement of funds from the Treasurers Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection, or DTAC, fund to the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation in an amount not to exceed $1,118,481.29. 731 approves a Courthouse Square Vendor's License Agreement for space rental on Courthouse Square for Underdogs Mobile through December 31st of 2020. 732 authorizes a lease agreement with Five Rivers Metro Parks to lease land from the Board of County Commissioners through December 31st of 2025. 733 authorizes a lease renewal with the Society of St. Vincent de Paul District Council of Dayton, Ohio for the leasing of 1,008 square feet of space located at 1133 South Edwin C. Moses Boulevard, Suite 384, in an amount of $13,552.91 through June 30th of 2021. 734 solicits bids for the Stillwater Center Area J Roof Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $70,000. And the last two resolutions authorize purchases for environmental services. The first is 735 with Ken's Truck Repair Incorporated through the Houston Galveston Area Council Contract of five 2021 Titan two-axle 48-foot TW refuse tipper trailers in an amount not to exceed $443,284.70. And last is 736 with Clark Equipment Company doing business as Bobcat Company through a state-term contract of one 2020 Bobcat compact track loader in an amount not to exceed $96,254.69. Thank you.
I move for proof.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services. Morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
We have four resolutions today. Resolution 20-737, except the maintenance bond for the Southview Medical Center North Tank Rehabilitation Project. I'm sorry, let me start over again. Resolution... Did I not hit that? Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Resolution 20-737, accept the maintenance bond for the Southview Medical Center development in the amount of $5,000. Resolution 20-738, solicit a request for qualifications for consultant services for the Centerville North Tank Rehabilitation Project. Resolution 20-739, authorize the reimbursement to MI Homes of Cincinnati LLC for oversized waterline utility work in connection with the Windstone subdivision, Sections 1 and 3, in the amount not to exceed $44,784.60. Resolution 20-740, authorize cost participation for properly sizing sanitary sewer line utility work in connection with the Windstone subdivision, Section 1, 3, and 4, in amount not to exceed $110,818.2, payable to MI Homes of Cincinnati LLC.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Human Services. Tom?
Good afternoon. Under Human Services Planning and Development, Resolution 741, will submit an application to the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for CARES Act ESG CV Housing Stability Funding in the amount of $242,900. Then under Job and Family Services, we have several more substitute care agreements that will last through March 31st, 2022. They are 742 with ENA Incorporated, 743 with Hiddlehouse, 744 with HYS Hands, 745 with NECO Incorporated, 746 with Nurturing Dreams and Visions Independent Living Center, 747 One Way Services for Youth, 748 Silver Linings Agency, 749 St. Joseph's Orphanage, 750 the Julia Page Family Center, 751 Triumph Nursing Agency, and 752 UMCH Family Services.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Human Services. Chris?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services 0753, authorizing the purchase from ITech AG LLC through a GSA Schedule 70 contract for the creation of a Grants Management System solution in the amount not to exceed $137,500. 0754, authorizing the creation of CARES Small Business Grant Program through the Office of CARES Act effective June 11th, 2020 through November 30th, 2020. And under Community and Economic Development, 0755, submit FY 2019 Action Plan substantial amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And 0756, approve Amendment Number 4 to the Citizen Participation Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under County Commissioners, 20-0757, reappoint Tim Beat, Eric Farrell, Tom Kelly, Brian McKenzie, Adam Blake, Michael Hames, Stephanie Killam, and Steve Wolf to the Housing Advisory Board for two-year terms through June 30th, 2022.
Do we have the resolution?
No, I think we'll do this one first.
I thought it was under us. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Okay. I move for approval.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a late agenda item. Under the Board of County Commissioners, it's 20-0759, declare racism as a public health crisis in Montgomery County. And we have a proclamation here. Because it's a little lengthy, I'm going to read part of it, and the rest of the Commissioners are going to read the rest. So it's a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis in Montgomery County. Whereas the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners is committed to equity and social justice for all citizens, including racial equity, inclusion, and diversity in all aspects of county government. Whereas Montgomery County identified racism as a root cause of poverty, negative social determinants of health, and overall poor health outcomes. And whereas race is a social construct with no biological basis. And whereas the Aspen Institute defines structural racism as a system in which public policies, institutional practices, cultural representations, and other norms work in various, often reinforcing ways, to perpetuate racial group inequity. And whereas racism causes persistent discrimination and disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, economic opportunity, infant mortality, employment, food access, and criminal justice. And an emerging body of research demonstrate that racism itself is a social determinant of health. And whereas while programs to address racial inequity have long been a priority of Montgomery County, more can and must be done in a transparent, accountable manner focused on community engagement. And whereas, as a result of social determinants of health, minorities and those with a disability are more likely to experience poor health outcomes, health inequities stemming from less economic stability. Physical education, physical environment, food, and access to healthcare systems. And whereas the Montgomery County Board of Commissioner stands with the residents of Montgomery County and our partners at Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County in their Declaration of Health Equity and All Policies approached passed by Resolution 19-549 on December 4th, 2019. And now Commissioner.
Okay, where am I starting?
Now there.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Montgomery County, Ohio, that the following commitments are hereby adopted. Number one, assert that racism is a public health crisis affecting our entire county. Number two, continue and renew our focus on social justice and equity. Number three, progress as an equity and justice-oriented organization with the Board of County Commissioners and its leadership team continuing to identify specific activities to further enhance diversity and to ensure anti-racism. Principles across the Board of Commissioners' leadership, staffing, training, and contracting. And number four, to promote equity and health equity through all policies approved by the Board of County Commissioners and enhance educational efforts aimed at addressing and dismantling racism and understanding how it affects the delivery of human and social services, job training, and employment access, and economic development through development of a new standalone career and innovation center at the West Town Shopping Center on West 3rd Street in Dayton. We will commit to existing and additional resources to the Montgomery County Micro Enterprise Grant Program targeted to small minority women and veteran-owned businesses. We will commit to targeted economic development resources to minority and disadvantaged neighborhoods in Montgomery County. We'll commit to address safe, affordable housing opportunities in the Black community. We will continue to address food insecurity, nutrition, and food access. We will commit to existing and additional resources to reduce infant mortality and increase maternal vitality in the Black community. We'll continue to, within applicable state law, provide greater access to local and diverse contracting wherever possible. And continue to advocate locally through the County Commissioners Association of Ohio and the National Association of Counties for relevant policies that improve health and well-being in racial and ethnic minority communities, and support local, state, regional, and federal initiatives that advance efforts to dismantle systemic racism. I'm going to see how much Carolyn has left here. Okay. We will further work to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism, and encourage other local, state, regional, national entities to recognize racism as a public health crisis.
That was number six, right?
You're on seven now. Okay. Support community efforts to amplify issues of racism and engage actively and authentically with racial and ethnic minority groups wherever they live in the county. To always promote and support policies that prioritize the health and well-being of all people, especially racial and ethnic minorities, by mitigating exposure to adverse childhood experiences. That includes to continue to expand and expand the Male Leadership Academy, which was established as a pilot program in 2019. And we will establish a Female Leadership Academy to serve young women in the community. We will continue to an already-existing racial equity and implicit bias training with the goal of reaching all Board of Commissioners staff. To encourage racial equity training among all community partners, grantees, vendors, and contractors. And the final one is to receive regular reports and updates from the county administrator and staff as directed to the Board of Commissioners on the progress of the commitments made in this resolution to facilitate ongoing community engagement and transparency, and to identify additional opportunities to further advance racial equity. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners supports all efforts in Montgomery County, the state of Ohio, and nationwide to address racism and public health disparities due to racial inequities. Be it further resolved that the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners call upon the Governor, the Speaker of the Ohio House, and the Ohio Senate President to join with us to declare racism as a public health crisis and to enact equity in all policies of the state of Ohio. Be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Commission certify this resolution and make an image copy of the resolution available on the Montgomery County, Ohio website at www.mcohi.org.
Do you have anything else to add before we go to our public hearing on Chicken Bristle Road? Stay. I do have a few comments to add. The resolution itself captures so much of, I know, the three of us and our administration truly believes in, but, you know, I have a few more words to add. I am very pleased to vote yes on this resolution. The interesting thing is, what, two months ago, Michael, Franklin County passed this ordinance? And the Franklin County, one of the Franklin County Commissioners called me and said, "Well, you guys do this too." And I said, "Well, we'll discuss it, but we want it to have some real meaning. We don't want to just declare, you know, and move on." So we've worked on this. And of course, then, in the last couple of weeks, it's become more of a priority. And so I want to start by thanking Michael and your team. And I especially want to thank my Commissioner Assistant, John Theobald, who really put the words to paper here and really expressed, I believe, all three of our and our administration's thoughts around this. So, John, thank you. So, the three of us have worked very hard, all of our elective, all of our time in elected office, I think, working for justice. And as Commissioners, we work to bring more resources and more community effort to reducing and eliminating poverty as a part of our vision for a more equitable society. The national outcry over the continued and far-too-even murder by law enforcement of Black men and women in our country is long overdue. And it's truly, it's a world outcry. It's not just a national outcry, it's a world outcry. And we believe this violence must end. I fully support the Black Lives Matter protesters in our communities and across the country, and all peaceful protest. And I am more than hopeful that we are going to make progress to eliminate racism. Many eyes have been opened, I believe, over the last few weeks, in awareness of racism and what it is, even if they didn't know that, oh, that's what racism is. You know, they thought it was gone. And as we know, it's not. But more importantly, anti-racism is a growing term that we hear often, and we referenced it in our resolution. And the definition of anti-racism that we are using is the active process of identifying and eliminating racism by changing systems, organizational structures, policies, and practices, and attitudes, so that power is redistributed and shared equitably. So it's my hope that this resolution, that is filled, as I said before, with tangible, actionable items, will foster change in our conversation in Montgomery County at our level, and I hope that it will filter to the rest of our jurisdictions and our whole state. These are, we really believe this, and I'm just very grateful that our resolution has real meaning and has action items that we're all committing to today to move forward. So that's all I'll say. Commissioner?
I'll say a few. I've talked before that Montgomery County has a true history of leading through collaboration and working with diverse people to solve problems. That's not new, but we have so much more to do. The task ahead may seem overwhelming at times. I mean, we're talking generations, hundreds of years, that we're trying to turn the tide. But I truly believe each of us has the power to make a difference in the lives of others. It is like each of us. So it is really the change, us, to start with each individual. We're talking about a collective approach. We are committed to doing more with our community partners and with our citizens to make real change in the community. That's why you have substantive things that we will measure ourselves against, and we hope to even add to the list as the years go by. I have to tell you that I have been moved by the pain and the outrage expressed by so many, not just in this community, not just in this state, not just in this country, but worldwide, over these, especially past few weeks. And I have also been humbled by the outpouring of support for racial justice and equality. It is so long overdue. We must all be part of the solution. So I really extend a hand out to our community, to every individual in this community, to please really, really think what you can do on those moments when no one else is around, but you know, and that you can make a difference. And catch yourself if you're about to, you know, I hope it opens some hearts as well as some minds. While I know there is much work to be done, this is certainly a step in the right direction. And as Debbie already said, now it's time to put actions into words. Throughout all of this in recent days, I've been pretty quiet on it because I've been committed to listening. I think that's an important role, is to listen and learn and really, really hear people. And I think that's one of the changes in this recent period, is that people are really hearing. There's a lot of raw emotion out there, and that's based on life experiences. And so I hope we'll all listen and learn and change. So I am committed, I didn't, we all three felt the same way. This is not about just going along with the crowd and putting words on a nice piece of paper and standing up there and saying, "We're all for this." This has deep meaning. And I pledge to all of our constituents that we will work hard to make these things happen. Even if we just move it a little bit at a time, we are going to move it in the right direction. So this is an important moment for me. My father was a principal in Dayton Public Schools, and I learned from an early, early age what this is all about. I was taught right. And I, he's no longer with us, neither is my mother, but I think he is smiling from above that we are doing the right thing. And I promise this county and our citizens that you can be sure that we will take this to heart, and we will be asking these questions of ourselves and trying to be the kind of partners that this community deserves. So it's an emotional moment for me, so I'll admit that, and I tend to be a little emotional at times. But this is a deep abiding, this is an important resolution, and we mean to keep that pledge to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. You know, I think it's important that we acknowledge that there's an elephant in the room, three white women sitting here. It's something that we will never know, the three of us, the experience of racial discrimination in our community that so many people of color experience each and every day. But I think you should know that all three of us are going to be doing our part to listen, learn, engage our community and our leaders, and make meaningful changes. This resolution today is not in reaction to the death of George Floyd or the countless others, but it is a reaction to just basically the things that we have been working on for quite some time. And I know that our county administrator is going to be reporting back to us, and we're going to basically being, you know, talk about this to our community. So we do have a lot of work to do. But I know the three of us are committed, committed to making this happen. So, thank you. Anybody have a motion to approve? Oh, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
First, I'd like to say, Commissioners, thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership. It is very rare that you get government that actually really puts something behind something. And the fact that the three of you, you don't just have a resolution here, you have a resolution that says we're going to make investments. And I think today we also got the support of the business community in the Chamber of Commerce. And the West Dayton Career and Innovation Center is a multimillion-dollar investment. And we were fortunate, even with COVID, that we have now gotten partners from the state, from the Area 7 Workforce Board, which Commissioner Lieberman heads up, from the business community. So your leadership on this and looking at our expenditures, how do we, how do we better contract with minority women and veteran-owned businesses? How do we look at our hiring? How do we look at infant mortality and make sure that moms have a better chance with the little ones? How do we look at food insecurity that has been across our county as more and more of our grocery stores have closed? You have really put some meat on the bones of this resolution, and I commend all three of you for doing this. Thank you very much. And thanks, John, again, for helping with the
And we were fortunate, even with COVID, that we have now gotten partners from the state, from the Area 7 Workforce Board, which Commissioner Lieberman heads up, from the business community. So your leadership on this and looking at our expenditures, how do we, how do we better contract with minority women and veteran owned businesses? How do we look at our hiring? How do we look at infant mortality and make sure that moms have a better chance with the little ones? How do we look at food insecurity that has been across our county as more and more of our grocery stores have closed? You have really put some meat on the bones of this resolution, and I commend all three of you for doing this. Thank you very much. And thanks, John, again, for helping with the writing. This is going to give us the ability to really do investments. And that, that will have a lasting impact on minority and underserved communities throughout our county. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
I move for approval.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have a hearing. And that is 20-0758, Chris Chicken Bristle Road Bridge Reconstruction Project.
Okay.
Mr. Gruner, Mr. Dura, anyone else wishing to address the county commission for this hearing? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
I do.
Oh, now, Joe Dura is our project manager for the Chicken Bristle Road Bridge Project, and he will be making the presentation for the hearing virtually. Joe?
Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, Emily, I have permission to share the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, just to confirm, do you see the presentation screen?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Paul, Commissioners, Administrator, thank you all. Again, my name is Joseph Dura with the Montgomery County Engineers Office, and this is the hearing for the Chicken Bristle Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. This specific bridge is located in Jackson Township on Chicken Bristle Road between Fols Road and Farmersville-Johnsville Road, northeast of the Village of Farmersville. Looking at an aerial of the job site, to the north and to the east is predominantly agricultural, and we do have some single family homes to the south. Overall scope of the project, what's driving this project is the condition of the superstructures or the beams. So the scope is to replace the existing beams. We will do some minor roadway approach work, keeping the alignment of the road the same. We will need to modify the vertical to profile the road slightly due to the new beams. And then we will upgrade the guardrail to meet current standards and do some additional safety grading associated with that new guardrail. Going into the condition, as I stated, the beams are what drive this project. Bridge was originally constructed in 1968, so it's over 52 years old. Over these years, water has infiltrated into the beams and have started to corrode the structural steel. As you can see in the photo in front, we're looking at the southernmost beam. The north beam is in the same condition. What we're looking at is the concrete of the beams has started to fall off, break off due to the water getting in there. The steel has begun to rust, corrode. And with that exposed steel, with the steel breaking now because of the corrosion, the steel's no longer carrying the loads that they once did as vehicles cross over the bridge. So we need to get in and replace these beams before they get any worse. This is standing on Chicken Bristle Road, looking at, looking eastbound across the bridge. Again, it's a tangent roadway, so the alignment is good, there's, it's easy to see. Like I said, there'll want to be some very minor profile work, vertical element work to tie the road into the new structure. To perform this project, we will need some temporary and perpetual easements from three ownership, from three different owners. The leased property on the north, they span the entirety of the project on the north, the Burgett property to the southwest, and which is the bottom left of the screen you're looking at, and the Stewart property to the southeast, which is the bottom right of the screen you're looking at. Starting with the leased property, they're on the north side, we will be asking for perpetual easement, which is highlighted in green, and temporary easement, which is highlighted in blue. To get an idea on the frontage of the leased property, standing, this is a photo, standing on Chicken Bristle Road, looking along the north side of the road in a westward direction. You can see the leased property, it's agricultural. You can see in this photo, the corn along the north side of the road. That agricultural field will not be impacted with this project, it is outside the temporary Now we are stand, the photo on the top left, we are standing on the west side of the project, looking eastbound along Chicken Bristle Road. Again, you have an agriculture field to the left, road to the right. And what we're looking at in the top left are, what I want to show you are the trees right in front. And then the photo on the bottom right, what we're doing is, you see the same trees, but we're looking from the road northbound along a field access drive. That field access drive will be maintained and will be kept open after the project. What we'll do is, as the guardrail comes off the bridge, the rail will immediately wrap and they're radius back away from the road, and that'll be able to maintain that driveway. And this final slide is showing that detail where you'll see in the top middle of the screen, guardrail to be installed in such a manner to maintain the field drive. That will require the removal of those trees, which are located in that proposed perpetual Moving to the southwest, which is the Burgett property, we will be requesting perpetual easement, highlighted in green. This is a photo of the Burgett frontage. We're standing on Chicken Bristle Road, looking along the south side of the road in an easterly direction. The frontage of the property is heavily vegetated, and that vegetation comes right up to behind the existing guardrail. So we propose, we will be putting in a new standard guardrail. The guardrail, the new guardrail will extend further away from the bridge and actually get pulled away from the road a little further than what the existing is. So that will require us to cut into that existing vegetation frontage, but there will still be vegetation behind the guardrail, which would provide the privacy to the Burgett property, like the current vegetation provides. Finally, moving to the southeast, this is Stewart property. We will be requesting perpetual easement and temporary easement. Perpetual, again, is in green, and the temporary is in blue. This is a photo, standing along Stewart property, we're on the north side of Chicken Bristle Road, looking westward at their driveway. Moving on, the photo here, top left, we're standing on the bridge, looking eastward along the north side, again, at their driveway. You can see the proximity of the driveway to the existing bridge. Now on the bottom right, we're standing on Chicken Bristle, looking southbound along their driveway. So like with the leased property and their field access, when we take the guardrail off the bridge, we will immediately radius that rail, as you can see in the top left of this image, and that will maintain the driveway. And we anticipate some damage being, to occur to the drive apron. So in the bottom right image, we will be replacing that asphalt drive with asphalt. So project costs, we've done the design of this project in-house. Construction is estimated to be about $300,000. We have secured a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for $200,000. The remaining $100,000 is going to be covered by County Road A&amp;G Funds. Schedule for the project, we have completed the design. We are entering into the right-of-way phase, which will be completed in December of this year. We'll advertise, starting in January, and award to contract in February. And through coordination with property owner, we have moved our construction schedule up to start in March and work through April, being the new, the completion date would be the end of April, so May 1st. That was coordinated with the, with this property owner out there to help work around the farmers' planting season. Figured it was more appropriate for us to get in, get the bridge done, and get out of there, so then they can do their field work versus us coming in later on in the summer. To be able to do the bridge, Chicken Bristle Road will be closed for nine weeks. Detour for the project from Chicken Bristle, going around from west to east, you'd be detoured on Farmersville-Johnsville Road to Havermail Road, and then taking you east all the way to Clayton Road, then back to Chicken Bristle Road. Those roads, Fols Road is available, but we are not promoting that. We'll sign for people to go past it due to the fact that it's a narrower, narrower road and harder for traffic to drive on. And with that, if anyone has any questions?
No, thanks. I guess, no? Okay, well, then I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Did we have, no one has to speak? Okay. Couple seconds. From the public, virtual.
They would have already asked the question, right?
They would have answered.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Now, I will move to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Chicken Bristle Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Jackson Township, and recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code, and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further comments? I see the county administrator.
All right, Emily, I'll stop sharing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
Thank you. Anybody want to close the meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.